May I say no?
May I say no.
The session is now called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the Philippine national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, pero saan silang anan? Alag ng puso sa titipoy buhay. Lubang hiniram, buya ka lang magiliw. Saman lulupi, kita pasisinil. Sa naranat, bundok saan? Aming likaya dapat may mahapin ang lamatay ng daril sa'yo.
Please remain standing for the invocation to be delivered by Representative Florida Robes from the Long District of San Jose del Monte City.
Let us bow our heads for a minute prayer. Dear Father in heaven, as we gently close our eyes, make us an instrument of thy peace. We thank you, oh Lord, for all the blessings that come through our journey into one's self and one's heart. As we sincerely claim the blessings of Almighty, as he says, "We are the salt of the earth and the light of the world." And not to forget to share bread with the hungry, sheltered oppressed, and the homeless. Clothe the naked, and never turn back on our own. Salt and light people, may not worry, because as we plant seeds of good deeds, we provide flavor when life is stale and give hope when life's dreams crash. Salt and light people are sorers of good deeds and reapers of God's blessings. To you, oh Lord, we verbally pray that we continue to create noise, loud noises, to drive the evil spirits away from our damn selves. In this, we humbly pray for our brothers and sisters who have been victimized by the holobaming. To you, oh Lord, we leave our hearts, in Jesus' name, in Mama Mary's name, we leave our hearts to the Lord. Amen.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we defer the calling of the role of honorable. Madam Speaker.
Is there any question? The chair hears none. The role call is deferred.
Madam Speaker, so the...
Hybrid and other quality seeds production, Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 8935, providing for Magna Carta of Students, Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 8936, designating the month of November as Bi-Pinoi, Build Pinoy Month, Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 8937, rationalizing firearms policy and amending for this purpose RA 10591, Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8938, providing for the preservation, afforestation, and state of development of the Bangrove forests in the Philippines, Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 8939, establishing the small and medium enterprises stock exchange, Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 8940, establishing the coastal environment program, Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 8942, condoning the obligation of Benguet Electric Cooperative Incorporated, payable to the Power, Sectors, Assets, and Liberties Management Corporation, Representative Uy Barretta.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 8943, condoning the obligation of Surigao del Sur to Electric Cooperative Incorporated, payable to the Power, Sectors, Assets, and Liberties Management Corporation, Representative Uy Barretta.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 8944, condoning the obligation of First Bukit Non Electric Cooperative Incorporated, payable to the Power, Sectors, Assets, and Liberties Management Corporation, Representative Uy Barretta.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 8945, condoning the obligation of Surigao del Sur One Electric Cooperative Incorporated, payable to the Power, Sectors, Assets, and Liberties Management Corporation, Representative Uy Barretta.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 8954, bataas nan nagtatakda ng hindi bababa sa siyam na unit ng asignaturang Filipino sa curriculum ng kolehiyo, Representative Stino and Castro France.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 8968, recognizing the annual observance of World Education Support Personal Day, declaring for the purpose that sixteenth day of May of every year is National Education Support Personal Day in the Philippines, Representative Stino and Castro France.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 8969, establishing the National Roads and Railway Safety Board, Representative Abayan.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization and Transportation.
House Bill 70, condoning the obligation of Sanboanga del Sur Two Electric Cooperative Inc., payable to the Power, Sectors, and Liberties Management Corporation, Representative Uy Barretta.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 8971, condoning the obligation of Lanau del Sur Rural Electric Cooperative Incorporated, payable to Pisam, Representative Uy Barretta.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 8972, condoning the obligation of Dowdeel Norte Electric Cooperative Inc., payable to Pisam, Representative Uy Barretta.
To the Committee on Cooperatives Development.
House Bill 8973, condoning the obligation of Misamis Oriental One Electric Cooperative Inc., payable to Pisam, Representative Uy Barretta.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 8974, condoning the obligation of Sanboanga City Electric Cooperative Inc., payable to Pisam, Representative Uy Barretta.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 8975, condoning the obligation of Bukit Non Second Electric Cooperative Inc., payable to Pisam, Representative Uy Barretta.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 8976, renaming the Awang Upi-Lebak Road in the province of Magindanao to Dato-Simyon A Dato-Manong National Highway, Representative Makap...
To the Committee on Pop...
61 to 1165 and 1169 of the Committee on Health and Appropriations.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report number 116, 1166 of the Committee on Justice and Appropriations on House Bill number 8989.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report number 1167 of the Committees on Transportation Appropriations on House Bill number 149.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report number 1168 of the Committees on Higher and Technical Education Appropriations on House Bill number 8990.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report number 1184 of the Committees on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources and Appropriations on House Bill number 9009.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session is suspended for a few minutes.
37 manifestation by the Pero, we must say that we have to Because after that, we will be Hi, hello, please, let's see Slow jump now It's going, it's going to be a long day Of course you have my favorite meal of this Yung with It is uh It is most simple, it is explanation And in fact, it's simple to explain Then sir, para ano to Para me, it's Pero it is simple, it is simple But no one, no one Yeah, that's a good thing If anybody asks
Session resume Majority Leader
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of the honorable members, so move Madam Speaker
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members
Roll call of members, honorable representatives Abaya Abayon Belianosa Abu Abueg Atcheron Akop Acosta Acosta Alba Adyong Advincula Agarao Agabao Albano Alcala Aleano Almario Almonte Alonte Alvarez Franz Alvarez Mercedes Alvarez Pantalyon Amante Amatong Andaya Ang Angara Castillo Antonino Antonio Aquino Magcaysay Aragonés Arbison Arcillas Arenas Atienza Mentado Bagau Bagatsing Bagilat Banal Barbers Barzaga Batawil Bautista Bendigan Bilaro Belmonte Feliciano Belmonte Jose Christopher Belmonte Ricardo Benitez Bernos Bertis Biazon Bilyones Biron Bolilia Bondok Bordado Bravo Anthony Bravo Maria Vida Brosas Bulut Bigtang Cagas Calderon Calixto Rubiano Caminero Campos Kanama Kari Casila Castelo Castro Franz Castro Fredinil Katamco Cayetano Celeste Seráfica Siriles Chávez Chipeco Co Coanco Cortés Cortuna Cosalan, Mark Gómez Gonzaga González Alexandria González Aurelio González Fernando Gorseta Gulyas Hernández Ferdinand Hernández Paul Herrera Di Hofer Alusos Javier Co Conhun Labad Labad Lacson Lagman Lenete Laugán Lazatin Liatson Li Limcaichong Lobregat López Benher López Carlo López Manuel Loyola Makapagalaroyo Maceda Matrona Malapitan Mangawang Magundadato Suarto Magundadato Sajid Marcoleta Marcos Marinho Márquez Martínez Matugas Liliana Mending Mendoza Mercado Mirasol Montoro Nava Nieto Noel Nograles Lasko Núñez Balanyáon Ominal Ocampo Olivares Ong Edwin Ong Henry Ortega Pablo Ortega Vininola Paciáu Paduano Palma Pancho Panganiban Panotes Papandayan Pichai Pico Pimentel Pineda Plaza Primisias Agabás Kimbo Radasa Primiresato Ramos Relampagos Rivilla Rova Puno Robes Rocamora Rodríguez Isidro Rodríguez Máximo Roman Romero Romualdes Romualdo Roque Sackdalan Segar Maria Sahali Salceda Salimbangon Salo Salon Sambar Sandoval Sangkopan Santos Repto Sarmento Cesar Sarmento Edgar Mary Sabiliano Semah Xiao Silberio Singson Swansing Estradita Swansing Horacio Suárez Si Alvarado Tambunting Tan Angelina Tan Milagrosa Tan Cherni Tejada Teves Tianco Ting Tiño Tolentino Trenyas Tugna Tupas Ti Umali Unavia Ungab Uniko Uy Juliet Uy Rolando Uy Bareta Vargas Vargas Alfonso Velarde Velasco Velasco Cartera Veloso Vergara Villa Fuerte Villa Nueva Villa Rasa Suárez Villa Rica Villarin Violago Yap Arthur Yap Milencio Yap Victor Yu Zamora Maria Carmen Zamor Ronaldo Zarate Zubiri Speakers present Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that one hundred seventy-six members responded to the roll
With one hundred seventy-six members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum
Madam Speaker
Majority Leader
Mr. Majority Leader
Madam Speaker, may we know the, uh, concerns of the Honorable Litatienza
Yes, uh, again, the secretariat is way off the count Ambilang punamen, we have one hundred fifty-five on the floor They have declared one hundred seventy-six persons So, we are questioning their count And we intend to take this out as we go on in today's, uh, session If we do not have a quorum, right now we have a quorum, but it's not one hundred seventy-six, it's one fifty-five As soon as we notice that we do not have a quorum, we will definitely call for another roll call At this point, I will put on record our question, thank you
The manifestation of the gentleman is noted, Majority Leader, please proceed
Thank you, Madam Speaker Madam Speaker, we would like to, uh, move that of Honorable Greg Gassataya, who are in the plenary Headed by, they are the Association of Parque Captains and the City Councils of Macalon City Headed by Nolesdon Mayor Evelio Leonardia Accompanied by Vice Mayor Elsin Familiaran, Councilor Bart Orolla, Councilor Lindo Ramos Councilor Renesito Novero Councilor Cesar Distrito, Councilor NRC And, uh, and the company, Madam Speaker
Sa mga bisita ni Congressman Greg Gassataya maayong hapon, welcome to the House of Representatives Majority Leader
Likewise, Madam Speaker, we'd like to greet the guests of the Honorable Henry Wominal Uh, they are from the local government of Osami City, Mismis of Xerental, and the local government of Isabel Leite Who are in the plenary, headed by Chief Inspector Jovi Espinido, Chief of Police, Osami City And spouse Judge Oliver Peras, Attorney Andres Fernandez Pastor Bert Rowan and spouse, and the rest of the companies
May we request the guests of Congressman Wominal to please stand up Welcome to the House of Representatives Majority Leader
Madam Speaker, may we move for suspension for a few minutes
Session is suspended for a few minutes
Madam Speaker, I move now that we consider on third reading House Bill number eight-eight-eight-five, and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the submeasure And conduct a nominal voting
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure And thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting
House Bill eight-eight-eight-five An Act Institutionalizing the Grant of Student Fair Discount Privileges on Public Transportation and for Other Purposes Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number eight-eight-eight-five Abaya Abayon Abelianosa Abu Abueg Atcheron Akop Acosta Costa Alba Adyong Advincula Agarao Agabao Albano Alcala Aleano Almario Almonte Alonte Alvarez Franz Alvarez Mercedes Alvarez Pantalyon Amante Amatong Andaya Ang Angara Castillo Antonino Antonio Aquino Magcaysay Aragonés Arbison Arcillas Arenas Atienza Amentado Bagau Bagatsing Bagilat Banal Barbers Barzaga Batawil Bautista Bendigan Bilaro Belmonte Feliciano Belmonte Jose Christopher Belmonte Ricardo Benitez Bernos Bertis Biazon Bilyones Biron Bolilia Bondok Bordado Bravo Anthony Bravo Maria Vida Brosas Bulut Bigtang Cagas Calderon Calixto Rubiano Caminero Campos Kanama Kari Casila Castelo Castro Franz Castro Fredinil Katamco Cayetano Celeste Seráfica Siriles Chávez Chipeco Co Coanco Coliantes Cortés Cortuna Cosalan Crisólogo Cuá Coresma Cueva Dalipe Datol Daza De Jesus De Venecia Defensor Del Mar Del Rosario Del Oso Montalia De Maporo Abdullah De Maporo Mohamed Khalid David Dorano Di Elago Enverga Erise Erigel Hermita Bohain Escudero Espina Espino Estrella Yusebio Evardone Fariñas Fernando Ferrer Juliet Ferrer Luis Ferriol Floirendo Flores Fortún Fortuno For Fente Bella Garbin Garcés García Gwendolin García Jose Enrique García Albano Garin Oscar Garin Sharon Gassataya Gachalian Herón Go Anna Cristina Go Mark Gómez Gonzaga González Alexandria González Aurelio González Fernando Gorseta Gulyas Hernández Ferdinand Hernández Paul Herrera Di Hofer Alusos Javier Co Conhun Labad Labad Lacson Lagman Lanete Laogán Lazatin Liatson Li Lanete, Laogan, Lazatin, Liachon, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangudadatus Huarto, Mangudadatus Ajid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Meliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Wominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisias Agabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirezato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sactalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Savillano, Semma, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tianco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarrasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred sixty-nine members voting in affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstaining, House Bill number eight-eight-eight-five is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading House Bill number eight-nine-zero-eight, and request the Secretary General to read the title of the submeasure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill eight-nine-zero-eight, an act establishing the office of social welfare attache, amending for the purpose Republic Act number eight-zero-four-two, otherwise known as the Migrant Workers and Overseas Filipino Act of nineteen ninety-five as amended and for other purposes. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill eight-nine-zero-eight. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Acoop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Agabao, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barzaga, Batawil, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertiz, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulit Bigtang, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Ceráfica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cohuanco, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisias Agabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirezato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sactalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Savillano, Semma, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tianco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarrasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy members voting in affirmative, zero against, and one abstaining, House Bill number eight-nine-zero-eight is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on third reading, consider on third reading House Bill number eight-nine-zero-nine, and request the Secretary General to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of the members for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill eight-nine-zero-nine, an act strengthening drug prevention and control, amending for the purpose Republic Act nine-one-six-five as amended, otherwise known as the Comprehensive Dangerous Drugs Act of two thousand and two. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill eight-nine-zero-nine. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Acoop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Agabao, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Cuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Dorano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Hermita Bohain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, Garcés, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassataya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Anna Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Co, Kunjun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lagman, Lanete, Laogan, Lazatin, Liachon, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangudadatus Huarto, Mangudadatus Ajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martín, Ugas, Meliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Wominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininolan, Pacquiao, Paduano, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisias Agabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirezato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sactalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Savillano, Semma, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tianco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarrasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-two members voting in affirmative, zero against, and zero abstaining, House Bill number eight-nine-zero-nine is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on third reading House Bill number eight-nine-one-two, and the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the submeasure and thereafter call the roll of the Honorable members for the nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill eight-nine-one-two, an act authorizing higher education curriculum development and graduate training in advanced energy and green building technologies and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill eight-nine-one-two. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Acoop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Agabao, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barzaga, Batawil, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertiz, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulit Bigtang, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Ceráfica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cohuanco, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Dorano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Tugas, Melania, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Jerico, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Wominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisias Agabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirezato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sactalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Savillano, Semma, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tianco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarrasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Lesio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-four members voting in affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstaining, House Bill number eight-nine-two-six is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on third reading House Bill number three-four-three-seven, and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the submeasure and thereafter call the roll for the nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The motion, hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill three-four-three-seven, an act providing for online network establishment policy for the Philippines. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill three-four-three-seven. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Acoop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Agabao, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barzaga, Batawil, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertiz, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulit Bigtang, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Ceráfica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cohuanco, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Dorano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Hermita Bohain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, Garcés, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gassataya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Anna Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Co, Kunjun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lagman, Lanete, Laogan, Sagarbaria, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Savillano, Semma, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tianco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarrasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-four members voting in affirmative, vote zero voting against, and zero abstaining, House Bill number three-four-three-seven is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading House Bill number six-six-two-five, and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the submeasure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill number six-six-two-five, an act classifying bamboo as an unregulated forest product and for other purposes. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill six-six-two-five. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Acoop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Agabao, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Amentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barzaga, Batawil, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertiz, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulit Bigtang, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Ceráfica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cohuanco, Coliantes, Pineda, Plaza, Premisias Agabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirezato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sactalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Savillano, Semma, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tianco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarrasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
Question, hearing none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill six-nine-seven-three, an act enhancing the effectiveness of Metropolitan Manila Council in formulating policy, rules, regulation, and enacting ordinances for Metro Manila, amending for the purpose Republic Act seven-nine-two-four entitled an act creating the Metropolitan Manila Development Authority, defining its powers and functions, providing funds therefore and for other purposes. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill six-nine-seven-three. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Acoop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Agabao, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong Andaya, Primisias Agabás, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilia, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rector, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Mary, Savelliano, Semma, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Baretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Raza Suárez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number six-nine-seven-three is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I'd like first to acknowledge our guest in the gallery, Jake Holloway, the edit Holloway, Janet Trishen, Angela Holloway from California.
Please stand up to be recognized, our guest from California. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, I'd like to get approval of House Bill number seven-three-zero, an act protecting seniors citizens from violence, defining elder abuse and prescribing penalties thereof. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to call, to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the role of Members for nominal voting.
House Bill number seven-zero-three-zero, an act protecting senior citizens from violence, defining elder abuse and prescribing penalties therefore. Role call of Members in consideration of House Bill seven-zero-three-zero.
Abaya, Abayon, Abellionosa, Abu, Abuega, Cheron, Acop, Acosta, Acosta, Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arsilias, Arenas, Atsienza, Amentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Bersaga, Batawi, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Biktang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chávez, Chepeco, Co, Kuwanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Casalan, Crisologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Dellosa Montalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Mohamed Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Australia, Josebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, García Guedolin, Garcias, García Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Pol, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Halus Hoss, Javier, Co, Kunhon, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lenete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lietchon, Lilim, Kaitchong, Lobrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuelis, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Soharto, Magudadato Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mending Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava Nieto, Noel, No Grales, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Uminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Man, Bininola, Pac, Paciao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias Agabás, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilia, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbarya, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sambar, Sangkopan, Santos Rector, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Mary, Savelliano, Semma, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Baretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Raza Suárez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number seven-zero-three-zero is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we ask for the approval of House Bill number eighty-eight-sixty-nine? May I ask the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and call for the nominal voting. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the role of Members for nominal voting.
House Bill eight-eight-six-nine, an act allocating the net national government share from the Malampayan Natural Gas Project for the payment of the standard debts and standard contract costs of the National Power Corporation to finance further exploration, development, and exploitation of energy resources and to lower electricity rates. Role call of Members in consideration of House Bill eight-eight-six-nine.
Abaya, Abayon, Abellionosa, Abu, Abuega, Cheron, Acop, Acosta, Acosta, Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arsilias, Arenas, Atsienza, Amentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Bersaga, Batawi, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Biktang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chávez, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mending Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava Nieto, Noel, No Grales, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Uminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Paciao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias Agabás, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilia, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbarya, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rector, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Mary, Savelliano, Semma, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Baretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Raza Suárez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-one members voting in the affirmative, six voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number eight-eight-six-nine is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may I ask for the approval on the third reading, House Bill number eighty-eight-eight-four? May I ask the Secretary General to read on the bill and of course, call for the nominal voting. Madam Speaker. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the role of Members for nominal voting.
House Bill number eight-eight-eight-four, an act expanding the coverage of the exemption from the payment of travel tax and providing travel tax discount to senior citizens and persons with disabilities, amending for the purpose Presidential Decree Number one-one-eight-three as amended. Role call of Members in consideration of House Bill eight-eight-eight-four.
Abaya, Abayon, Abellionosa, Abu, Abuega, Cheron, Acop, Acosta, Acosta, Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arsilias, Arenas, Atsienza, Amentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Bersaga, Batawi, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Biktang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixtrobiano, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chávez, Chepeco, Co, Kuwanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Casalan, Crisologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Dellosa Montalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Mohamed Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Australia, Josebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, García Guedolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Ferdinand, Hernández Pol, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Halus Hoss, Javier, Co, Kunhon, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lenete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lietchon, Lilim, Kaitchong, Lobrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuelis, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Soharto, Magudadato Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mending Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava No Grales, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Uminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo.
On third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading, House Bill number eight-nine-one-one, and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure and call the role of the Members for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the role of Members for nominal voting.
House Bill eight-nine-one-one, an act mandating a minimum distance for overtaking of cyclists by motor vehicles and providing penalties for violations thereof. Role call of Members in consideration of House Bill eight-nine-one-one.
Abaya, Abayon, Abellionosa, Abu, Abuega, Cheron, Acop, Acosta, Acosta, Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arsilias, Arenas, Atsienza, Amentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Bersaga, Batawi, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Biktang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chávez, Chepeco, Co, Kuwanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Casalan, Crisologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Dellosa Montalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Mohamed Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Australia, Josebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, García Guedolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Pol, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Javier, Halus Hoss, Co, Kunhon, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lenete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lietchon, Li, Lemkaitchong, Lobrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Soharto, Magudadato Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mending Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava Nieto, Noel, No Grales, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Ocampo, Uminal, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Paciao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias Agabás, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilia, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rector, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Mary, Savelliano, Semma, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Baretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Raza Suárez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred seventy-eight members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number eight-nine-one-one is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading, House Bill number eight-nine-five-nine, and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure and thereafter call the role for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the role of Members for nominal voting.
House Bill eight-nine-five-nine, an act allowing regulating the use of motorcycles as public utility vehicles, amending for this for the Republic Act number four-one-three-six, otherwise known as the Land Transportation and Traffic Code and for other purposes. Role call of Members in consideration of House Bill eight-nine-five-nine.
Abaya, Abayon, Abellionosa, Abu, Abuega, Cheron, Acop, Acosta, Acosta, Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arsilias, Arenas, Atsienza, Amentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Bersaga, Batawi, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Biktang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chávez, Chepeco, Co, Kuwanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Casalan, Crisologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Dellosa Montalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Mohamed Kalid, Duavit Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Australia, Josebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, García Guedolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Pol, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Halus Hoss, Javier, Co, Kunhon, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lenete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lietchon, Lilim, Kaitchong, Lobrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuelis, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Soharto, Magudadato Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mending Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava Nieto, Noel, No Grales, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Uminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Nueva, Villa Raza Suárez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred eighty-one members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number eight-nine-five-nine is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading, House Bill number eight-eight-seven-zero, and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure and thereafter call the role for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the role of Members for nominal voting.
House Bill number eight-eight-seven-zero, an act providing for a stay in the execution of a decision or the resolution of an administrative agency or quasi-judicial tribunal upon reasonable filing of a motion for reconsideration, appeal, or petition for review. Role call of Members in consideration of House Bill eight-eight-seven-zero.
Abaya, Abayon, Abellionosa, Abu, Abuega, Cheron, Acop, Acosta, Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Matong Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arsilias, Arenas, Atsienza, Amentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Bersaga, Batawi, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Biktang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chávez, Chepeco, Co, Kuwanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Casalan, Crisologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Dellosa Montalia. de Jesús, de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, de Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Armita, Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ebardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florento, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin, Óscar, Garin Charon, Gassetay, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Gomar, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Halusso, Xavier, Co, Hunla, Badlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, López Benhor, López Carlo, López Manuel, Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadatos Suarto, Mangodadatos Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Karia, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salón, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sabillano, Semasiaw, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Teada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tulintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Villaras Suárez, Villiarica, Villiarin, Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor U, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With one hundred eighty-one members voting in affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstaining, House Bill number 8870 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader. Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee report on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill number 7376 and 1823, further strengthening the office of the Solicitor General by increasing its powers and functions and redefining, expanding, and rationalizing its organization. In accordance with our rules, Madam Speaker, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee report. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, we are also in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee report on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill number 8715 and Senate Bill number 1355, adapting innovation as vital component of the country's development policies to drive inclusive development, promote the growth and national competitiveness of micro, small, and medium enterprise. In accordance with our rules, Madam Speaker, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee report. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Likewise, Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee report on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill number 8795 and Senate Bill number 1529, strengthening the National Museum of the Philippines. Likewise, in accordance with our rules, Madam Speaker, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee report. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading House Bill number 7410 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 7410, an act mandating the wireless telecom companies to transfer five-year-old cell towers to REIT corporations. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 7410.
Abaya, Abayo, Nabillianosa, Abu, Abueg, Achiron, Aco, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Umentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Bersaga, Bataw, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulutbektang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castrofrans, Castropedenil, Katamco, Caetano, Celeste, Serafica, Ciriles, Chaves, Chepeco, Co, Juango, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo Cuah, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, de Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Armita, Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ebardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florento, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin, Óscar, Garin Charon, Gassetay, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Gomar, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Halusso, Xavier, Co, Kunhon, Labadlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, López Benhor, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadatos Suarto, Mangodadatos Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez, Malanyao, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paquea Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskim, Boradasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Rivilla, Ropuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salón, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sabillano, Semasiaw, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Teada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tulintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso Vergara, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Villaras Suárez, Villiarica, Villiarin, Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor U, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With one hundred eighty-three members voting in affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number 7410 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader. Madam Speaker, may we greet the guests of Honorable Wes Gachalian of the First District of Venezuela City, the members of the Sumahan of the Parangaykagawan of Venezuela City headed by its President Honorable Michael Mayol.
We would like to greet the guests of Congressman Wes Gachalian from Venezuela. Please rise to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading House Bill number 8873 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill number 8873, an act reducing food waste through food donations and food waste recycling. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8873.
Abaya, Abayo, Nabillianosa, Abu, Abueg, Achiron, Aco, Acosta Alba, Aco, Jong, Advinkula, Agraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Umentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Bersaga, Bataw, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulutbektang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castrofrans, Castropedenil, Katamco, Caetano, Celeste, Serafica, Ciriles, Chaves, Chepeco, Co, Juango, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo Cuah, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, de Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Armita, Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ebardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florento, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin, Óscar, Garin Charon, Gassetay, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Gomar, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Halusso, Xavier, Co, Hunla, Badlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, López Benhor, López Carlo, López Manuel, Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadatos Suarto, Mangodadatos Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez, Malanyao, Ominalo, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paquea Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskim, Boradasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Rivilla, Ropuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salón, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sabillano, Semasiaw, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Teada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tulintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Villiras Suárez, Villiarica, Villiarin, Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor U, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With one hundred eighty-three members voting in affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number 8873 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading House Bill number 8910 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 8910, an act strengthening the games and amusements board and for other purposes. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8910.
Abaya, Abayo, Nabillianosa, Abu, Abueg, Achiron, Aco, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Umentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Bersaga, Bataw, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulutbektang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castrofrans, Castropedenil, Katamco, Caetano, Celeste, Serafica, Ciriles, Chaves, Chepeco, Co, Juango, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo Cuah, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, de Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Armita, Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ebardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florento, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin, Óscar, Garin Charon, Gassetay, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Gomar, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Halusso, Xavier, Co, Hunla, Badlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, López Benhor, López Carlo, López Manuel, Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadatos Suarto, Mangodadatos Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez, Malanyao, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paquea Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskim, Boradasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Rivilla, Ropuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salón, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sabillano, Semasiaw, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Teada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tulintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Villiras Suárez, Villiarica, Villiarin, Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor U, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With one hundred eighty-five members voting in affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstaining, House Bill number 8910 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we greet the guests of Honorable Henry Ominal of the Second District of Misamis Occidental as well as the not copartilished representative Honorable Subyan Canama. They are their namely Hail Mary Lumbatan, Alicia Lorenton, Missaline Bendigan, Mr. Alexander Nacion, Ms. KJ Pondok, Eric Abing, Clint Gehe, Herbert Magsayo, Jamaica Ferraren, Jennifer Chavez, Mildred Kaballit, Edna Delashera, Lilith Saison, Siljan Pearlueva, Kian Gabrielueva, Eduardo Mercader, Maria Teresa El Mercader, Ria Edsinas, John Edward Mercader, Strato Caserinas, Zoe Sinas, Marcela Nueva, Thamsis Nueva, Merlinda Almario, Erwin Lacpaugh, Marilin Albiso, Princess Gwendeth Bendigan, and Mr. Noel Lorenton.
Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading House Bill number 8918 and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 8918, an act designating the national music competitions for young artists as the national youth development program for music, defining its role and functions, and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8918.
Abaya, Abayo, Nabillianosa, Abu, Abueg, Achiron, Aco, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agraw, Agabal, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Umentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Bersaga, Bataw, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulutbektang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castrofrans, Castropedenil, Katamco, Caetano, Celeste, Serafica, Ciriles, Chaves, Chepeco, Co, Juango, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cusalan, Crisologo Cuah, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, de Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Armita, Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ebardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florento, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcias, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin, Óscar, Garin Charon, Gassetay, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Gomar, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Halusso, Xavier, Co, Kunhon, Labadlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, López Benhor, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadatos Suarto, Mangodadatos Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez, Malanyao, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paquea Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskim, Boradasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Rivilla, Ropuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salón, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sabillano, Semasiaw, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Teada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tulintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso Vergara, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Villaras Suárez, Villiarica, Villiarin, Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor U, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri. Subiri.
With one hundred eighty-five members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstaining, House Bill number eight-nine-one-eight is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, respectfully move that we approve on third reading House Bill number eight-nine-one-nine, copies of which were previously distributed to members consistent with the rules. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill, and thereafter to call for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the measure, and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill eight-nine-one-nine, an act creating two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the ninth judicial region to be stationed in the municipality of Lile, province of San Buanga del Norte, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose section fourteen J of Patazpanpan Sabila one-two-nine, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of nineteen eighty, as amended. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill eight-nine-one-nine. Abaya, Abayo, Nabillanoza, Abua, Obuega, Cheron, Aco, Pacosta, Acosta, Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agraw, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatongandaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino Antonio, Akino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bursaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bandiga, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Verón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut, Bechtang, Kagas, Calderón, Calistro, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Seráfica, Siriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Kuwanko, Culiantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuwaresma, Cueva, Dalipé, Datol, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Delosario, de Losa Montalia, Dimapur, Abdullah, Dimapur, Mohamed Khalid, Duabit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Bouain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Sebbyo, Ebardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcés, García Guedolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin, Oscar, Grincharon, Gastaña, Gachilán, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas Hernández, Ferdinand, Hernández, Pol, Herrera, Dee, Hofer, Halusso, Javier, Co, Labad, Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Lauga, Lasatin, Lietchón, Li, Limcaichón, Lobrigat, López Benhor, López Carlo, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroya, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato, Suarto, Mangodadato, Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Merazol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Ominalo, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Pangaliban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramírez, Sato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilla, Ruapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sactalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salón, Sanbar, San Doble, San Copan, Santos, Recto, Sarmiento, César, Sarmiento Edgar Mérida, Sabelliano, Semasiaw, Silveiro, Sinson, Swansing Estrelle, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambontín, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti'umaliunabia, Ungab, Uniko. Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco, Quatera, Biloso, Vergara, Villaferte, Villanueva, Villeras, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Subiri.
With one hundred eighty-six members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstaining, House Bill number eight-nine-one-nine is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we designate the following members of the Bay Carnival Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill number eight-eight-six-nine and Senate Bill number one-nine-five-zero, allocating the net national government share from the Malampaya Natural Gas Project for the payment of stranded debts and stranded costs of the National Power Corporation. These are Representative Lord Alan J. Velasco, Representative Carlos Roman Oy Bareta, Representative Mark Aaron Sanbar, Representative Jose Enrique García III, and Representative Orastes Salon. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, respectfully move that we designate the following members of the Bay Carnival Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill number six-two-seven-six and Senate Bill number two-zero-nine-eight, ensuring the continuous uninterrupted transmission and distribution of electricity. These are Representative Lord Alan J. Velasco, Representative Carlos Roman Oy Bareta, Representative Mark Aaron Sanbar, Representative Jose Enrique García III, and Representative Orastes Salon. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we designate Representative Luis Raymond Villaforte as additional member of the Bay Carnival Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill number eight-eight-six-two and Senate Bill number one-five-three-two strengthening, promoting, developing startup ecosystems.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading House Bill number eight-nine-two-three, copies of which were previously distributed to members pursuant to our rules. For this purpose, Madam Speaker, I respectfully request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill, and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the measure, and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill eight-nine-two-three, an act creating a municipal trial court for the municipality of Tagbuan, province of Iluilo, in the sixth judicial region, and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill eight-nine-two-three. Abaya, Abayo, Nabillanoza, Abua, Obuega, Cheron, Aco, Pacosta, Acosta, Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agraw, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatongandaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino Antonio, Akino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bursaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bandiga, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Verón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut, Bechtang, Kagas, Calderón, Calistro, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Seráfica, Siriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Kuwanko, Culiantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuwaresma, Cueva, Dalipé, Datol, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Delosario, de Losa Montalia, Dimapur, Abdullah, Dimapur, Mohamed Khalid, Duabit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Bouain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Sebbyo, Ebardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcés, García Guedolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin, Oscar, Grincharon, Gastaña, Gachilán, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernández, Ferdinand, Hernández, Pol, Herrera, Dee, Hofer, Halusso, Javier, Co, Kunhon, Labad, Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Lauga, Lasatin, Lietchón, Li, Limcaichón, Lobrigat, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sactalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salón, Sanbar, San Doble, San Copan, Santos, Recto, Sarmiento, César, Sarmiento Edgar Mérida, Sabelliano, Semasiaw, Silveiro, Sinson, Swansing Estrelle, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambontín, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti'umaliunabia, Ungab, Uniko. Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco, Quatera, Biloso, Vergara, Villaferte, Villanueva, Villeras, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Subiri.
With one hundred eighty-seven affirmative votes, and negative zero vote, and abstentions zero, the House Bill eight-nine-two-three is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading House Bill number two-five-eight-zero, copies of which were previously distributed to members pursuant to. For this purpose, Madam Speaker, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill, and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is requested to read the title of the bill for nominal voting.
House Bill two-five-eight-zero, an act declaring December sixteen of every year as the Sendong Memorial and Disaster Preparedness Day in Cagayan de Oro City and Iligan City. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill two-five-eight-zero. Abaya, Abayo, Nabillanoza, Abua, Obuega, Cheron, Aco, Pacosta, Acosta, Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agraw, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatongandaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino Antonio, Akino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bursaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bandiga, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Verón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut, Bechtang, Kagas, Calderón, Calistro, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Seráfica, Siriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Kuwanko, Culiantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuwaresma, Cueva, Dalipé, Datol, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Delosario, de Losa Montalia, Dimapur, Abdullah, Dimapur, Mohamed Khalid, Duabit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Bouain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Sebbyo, Ebardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcés, García Guedolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin, Oscar, Grincharon, Gastaña, Gachilán, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas Hernández, Ferdinand, Hernández, Pol, Herrera, Dee, Hofer, Halusso, Javier, Co, Kunhon, Labad, Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Lauga, Lasatin, Lietchón, Li, Limcaichón, Lobrigat, López Benhor, López Carlo, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroya, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato, Suarto, Mangodadato, Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Merazol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Ominalo, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Pangaliban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramírez, Sato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilla, Ruapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sactalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salón, Sanbar, San Doble, San Copan, Santos, Recto, Sarmiento, César, Sarmiento Edgar Mérida, Sabelliano, Semasiaw, Silveiro, Sinson, Swansing Estrelle, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambontín, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti'umaliunabia, Ungab, Uniko. Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco, Quatera, Biloso, Vergara, Villaferte, Villanueva, Villeras, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Subiri.
With one hundred eighty-seven members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstaining, House Bill number two-five-eight-zero is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading House Bill number eight-eight-nine-eight, copies of which were previously distributed to members pursuant to our rules. For this purpose, Madam Speaker, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill, and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure, and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill eight-eight-nine-eight, an act declaring March eighth of every year a special non-working holiday in the province of Compostela Valley in commemoration of its founding day. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill eight-eight-nine-eight. Abaya, Abayo, Nabillanoza, Abua, Obuega, Cheron, Aco, Pacosta, Acosta, Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agraw, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatongandaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino Antonio, Akino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bursaga, Batawil, Bautista, Bandiga, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Verón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut, Bechtang, Kagas, Calderón, Calistro, Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Seráfica, Siriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Kuwanko, Culiantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuwaresma, Cueva, Dalipé, Datol, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venecia, Defensor, Delmar, Delosario, de Losa Montalia, Dimapur, Abdullah, Dimapur, Mohamed Khalid, Duabit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Bouain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Sebbyo, Ebardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, Garcés, García Guedolin, García Jose Enrique, García Jose Albano, Garin, Oscar, Grincharon, Gastaña, Gachilán, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernández, Ferdinand, Hernández, Pol, Herrera, Dee, Hofer, Halusso, Javier, Co, Kunhon, Labad, Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Lauga, Lasatin, Lietchón, Li, Limcaichón, Lobrigat, López Benhor, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroya, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato, Suarto, Mangodadato, Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Merazol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Ominalo, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakia Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Pangaliban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramírez, Sato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilla, Ruapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sactalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salón, Sanbar, San Doble, San Copan, Santos, Recto, Sarmiento, César, Sarmiento Edgar Mérida, Sabelliano, Semasiaw, Silveiro, Sinson, Swansing Estrelle, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Alvarado, Tambontín, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti'umaliunabia, Ungab, Uniko. Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco, Quatera, Biloso, Vergara, Villaferte, Villanueva, Villeras, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Subiri.
With one hundred eighty-eight members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstaining, House Bill number eight-eight-nine-eight is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading House Bill number-
Session is suspended.
Yeah, pero, kahit na, 187 beton bumoto, naman, hindi na, let me put a record first, there were not, we did not have 187, pero yo ko na binababoy mo, I love this institution.
What made me come down from my office is that I've been hearing that 187 continuously vote for the measures being read. So I came down to see for myself whether 187 are present indeed. But there are not more than thirty now members on the floor, and you keep on announcing 187 voting in the affirmative and zero in the negative. That is a machery of congressional procedures, and I cannot allow that. I move for adjournment.
Session is suspended.
Motion suspended.
There is a motion for adjournment. You cannot suspend the session. You have to rule on that, Madam Speaker. You better learn your rules. We're about to close the seventeenth Congress, and you still do not know the rules. I'm question poor, I question of corum. You have to take it up.
...
...
...
... Padala na natin tumulog. Sir, kung meron ba namang tractor parts sa'yo? Very Filipino tunggol. Ang Filipino hindi naniniwala na may tapon. May rere. Takeout. Takeout na yung tugulayan din. Yung Filipino din. Yung representeche. Walang aksayan. Sir, kaya tayo. Dapat pakikinuwa pa na si Aceza sa'yo si Filipino. Sir, sir, sir. May 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 tayo gusto.
Salimukin malong. Kumayat yata ng PS eh. Kumayat sa PS eh. Ano maningyabi sa'yo? Ano maningyabi sa'yo?
All thirty-nine bills. Sir, ganun na sasabihin mo na all thirty-nine bills para Kialen. Tapos... Maga-adjourn na tayo. Sa'yo. We call it the bill.
Ano ko?
Boss, na day ko hindi nakikipinit sa'yo. Sir, the thirty-nine. Yes, because we have sixty-six. We have sixty-six. Para magkatapantu magkatahimay.
Okay, okay. How's everything?
But I know symbolically when you start the session or the roll, they close the doors and then after... So para lang simi those who are... Then para... I suppose it's continuous. When the lights go out, when you... But now, sir, I don't think that I need to allow it. We will try to... Sir, the Secretary General will keep on marching. Yes, sir, but we have only one day.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize the Honorable Congressman Aceanza from Partilist Buhay.
The Honorable Aceanza is recognized.
Madam Speaker, upon the request of the Majority Leader, the Majority Leader would like to take up some administrative measures. So we momentarily withdraw our motion to adjourn.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I respectfully move that we instruct the Secretary General to transmit all thirty-nine bills approved on third reading. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn until Wednesday, February seventeenth. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is not. Session is adjourned until Wednesday, February sixth, two thousand nineteen at three P M.